Our 27th meeting of fiscal year 2022. Let's go around the room and I'm Jenny Swenson Chair.
I'm Cheryl.
Cheryl Taggias, member.
Kathleen.
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
Meredith.
Meredith Hall, member.
And for staff, we have Julia.
Julia Getman, clerk.
Excellent, thank you. And we're waiting on Rich Beeler, he will be joining us shortly. Maybe in 10 minutes or so. We don't have any minutes to approve yet. Julia, did you want to do a staff update tonight, or are we gonna bypass that?
We don't have any minutes to approve, I thought we did.
We have some partial minutes that Cheryl brought to our attention for the 88 Warf, but I don't think they're completed minutes or.
Those, for some reason, I couldn't find the final draft of those. But I will find them and get them to you as soon as possible, so I just emailed everybody the paragraph that's in the draft, that's regarding 88 Warf. But there were two sets of minutes in the in the Dropbox, one was for March 14th and one was for March 17th.
Yeah, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed those, sorry. All right, I haven't had a chance to read them, sorry about that. Okay, our next meeting dates April 14th and April 28th, and there is a site walk at 10:00 a.m. at the 1200 Brush Hill Road.
Which I can make.
Okay, well, you can swing by another time, it's right there.
I checked it out the other day.
That should be fine then. Oh, good, me too, I've seen it myself, it's.
I know, it's right before you turn for your driveway.
No excuse on my end.
Exactly.
Okay, anyone for citizen speak, just to raise your hands. I'm not seeing anyone for citizen speak tonight. So, I'll check one last time, no, okay. Public hearing, we can't start for another 38 seconds. So, our agenda tonight has a public hearing for 1200 Brush Hill Road, Scenic Road. And then we will hear from Mr. Corcoran about 88 Warf Special Permit Amendment. And then we have an approval not required plan for 582 Bucolat. So, and then our final agenda item is old business, we have a few minutes to talk about the annual town meeting articles. And that's it, so. My clock has 10 seconds to go. And then we can open our public hearing. So, do we need to admit anyone, probably Ned Corcoran, we need to get him in as a panelist. Or, and Ned, did you want to bring anyone else in as a panelist to talk about 1200 Brush Hill Road? Scenic Road? Okay, well, let's open our public hearing on 1200 Brush Hill Road, the scenic way. And let's introduce Ned as soon as we can get him in as a panelist. I don't know if Sean can hear me. I think Sean's running two meetings tonight, our incredible Milton Exa staff, I don't know how they do it.
I do have a message from Ned that he's asked, I mean, he's asking to be admitted, so maybe Sean's not able to admit him at this time, I'm not sure.
Okay, I don't know if Sean can hear us. Hi Sean. Yeah, I should really get Sean's text number or something at times like these. All right, well, it is a scenic way, and for those who have seen Brush Hill Road.
Then can't you let him in, aren't you a co-host?
Julia, are you able to let him in? I'm not. I'm not seeing any feature.
Okay.
I'm sorry, no, it's a good question to ask, I should be by now, but I'm clicking on him and I'm not having any luck. Julia, are you able to admit our panelists? Are you a co-host? We wanted to move Ned from attendee to panelist.
Coming in now.
Hi Ned, are you able to get in yet? Oh, and Rich Beeler's here. So we'll move him from attendee to panelist too. Oh, good. Okay, hi Ned.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, I'm glad you made it over the gauntlet.
Thank you, in that last 30 seconds that you sit there in limbo waiting for the computer to acknowledge you is probably the most difficult. Thank you, Ned Corcoran, representing Brush Hill Care Center. My suggestion tonight is, I know we have a site walk scheduled for Saturday morning at 10 o'clock with other or other groups, I think the Historical Commission, Conservation Commission, Shade Tree Advisory Committee, etc., my suggestion would be simply continue this hearing until Saturday for the site walk and then to the next, your next meeting, I think what we said suggested two weeks ago was that we thought it was important to meet with collective groups to get a sense of what how the wall should be repaired and what trees should be planted and where, and we didn't want to step up and be presumptuous and take with ideas that might not be accepted, we thought it'd be helpful to have a discussion with folks and then go from there.
That makes sense to me. Did anybody have any questions for Ned prior to going to our meeting on Saturday? We can just. So, did you want to call this, to continue this to our next meeting?
Yes, please, the other thing I would say is that the client representatives, Yosef Mervin and Gershon Klein, Mr. Klein is the head of the care center and Yosef is the new sort of onsite manager, neither one will be available on Saturday, they are very conservative practicing Jews and Saturday being the Sabbath, they will not be present, but I will be there and have the ability to probe and listen and obviously take suggestions and report back to them early next week.
Okay.
I would ask that you continue this hearing until the next, your next meeting.
Okay, any objections from my fellow board members?
No. I just wanted to say that we, did you want to read into the record the letter that we got from Branch Lane?
Sure.
Whether Ned had seen it or mentioned it, that we have report from, from Branch?
Yes.
I was not aware of that.
Oh, okay, well, it's three paragraphs, I'm happy to read it to you. And if you need some time to digest it and respond next time, that's fine, but why not make progress here? Branch Lane, our tree warden said, after visiting the site and viewing the scenic road violation, I submit the following. The violator shall replace, number one, the violator shall replace the, remove trees with three, one and a half to two inch caliper trees, species as specified by the town's Shade Tree Advisory Committee. And exact location on Brush Hill Road to be determined by the committee. The planting project will include two years maintenance to ensure survival of the newly planted trees. Number two, the violator will contribute 4,200 to the town cooperative tree planting account. These two items essentially accomplish a 3-2-1 replacement plan to remediate the loss of town trees removed. The violator will deposit a refundable deposit in the amount of 2,100 to be received and maintained by the town treasurer for a two-year period after planting to ensure survival of the newly planted trees. Inspection of the trees to be conducted annually by DPW Arboris. If the newly planted trees are thriving after two years, the funds will be authorized to be released by the town's tree warden. Otherwise, the funds will be used to replace any tree or trees showing signs of failure. That's from our Branch Lane tree warden.
I will take that under advisement with my client.
Okay. Ned, I just was gonna ask, are you gonna have any visuals with you? I think for me, it would be helpful to have a picture of what the stonework, stone walls looked like before they were taken down.
I do, I know that Tim pulled up the last time a Google Earth image, I have copies of those images.
That would be great.
With me, I also have a marked up site plan that shows the location of the trees that were removed within the town's right of way. So I have, I have those two things and I think.
Thank you.
And I'll bring copies, enough copies so that folks on the walk will have a chance to see it.
That's a great idea, Meredith, thank you. Okay, all right, any further questions before we let Ned go? I'll be right back for the next topic, but. Okay, so we will continue 1200 Brush Hill Road, Scenic Way to our next meeting.
Do we need a motion?
Yep. Good idea.
So I would move that we would continue the hearing on the scenic road petition for whatever the number was, Brush Hill Road to April 14th?
14th.
At 7:05.
Okay, that's good, then I won't be trying to fill five minutes of jibber jabber. Because that was painful.
You did a lovely job.
I second, so.
Okay, all right, let's, okay, Meredith's second, all in favor, Cheryl?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Good evening, by the way, and Meredith?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And Jenny Swenson, yes. Okay, now let's open 88 Warf Special Permit Amendment, Mr. Corcoran.
Thank you, again Ned Corcoran for the record. Last time, I think the board was prepared to grant the request to amend the permit to eliminate the obligations of of the 88 Warf Street condominium association to maintain the public access elements both at 41 Warf Street, which is the property that the association currently owns, but plans to convey to the town pursuant to its agreement with the Board of Selectment, or the Select Board, and then also 25 Warf Street and Captain's Landing at the far end of 41. And we had requested that we would hold on to the obligation to maintain the park per components of 25. As my clients were watching the debate or the hearing two weeks ago, they were intrigued by the suggestion that it might be more appropriate to enter into a license agreement with the select board relative to that maintenance obligation, and so I would ask the board to consider that as a further request or the modification of our, of the condominium associations' request. So, I provided the board with a draft of a decision, it strikes out reference to the requirement that the association would continue to maintain the public park elements of 25 Warf Street. And so, with that modification, I would ask the board to approve the modification to the special permit as I proposed it. And then open up the questions. Cheryl's got a question.
Oh Cheryl?
Yes. Has that discussion of that change been discussed with the select board? And where is the, so that's one question. The second question has to do with the fact of the decision not having any reference to being held in escrow, so I wanted to ask about that since we don't have approved meeting minutes from the March 10th meeting. And then, thirdly, when is the vote scheduled with the condominium association?
The first answer is we have not spoken with the select board, the meeting that was scheduled to occur with two members and the town council got continued at their request and has not been rescheduled, we're waiting for Kevin Freitag to get back to us with a new date. I don't see an issue, but I can't answer the question otherwise, I think the second question. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the permit, the modification needs to suggest that the property, that the decision would be held in escrow. As a fundamental matter, the board would vote to have it held in escrow by town council until there is a closing on the transfer of the property. This modification doesn't take effect until the town owns the property. And then, once there's a deed passed, this permit modification would be recorded after the deed. But it's, you know, it's a, so, I think Kathleen might mail into that.
I was just gonna say that Ned had put that into the draft, as the draft decision that would have been recorded did say that it was, you know, be held in escrow. But since it's not gonna get recorded until the actual event, I didn't see any reason to have that language actually in the permit. You know, unless Ned's planning on breaking into town hall and stealing it and recording it before there's some change. It didn't, it didn't make, as a conveyancer, it just didn't make any sense to me to have that included in the decision. If we be in the motion that we make, that the decision be, you know, signed by our deputy, our director of planning and development on behalf of the board and held in escrow until the conditions had been met. But it wouldn't be in the permit, the amendment itself.
So that would be Kathleen, in a motion tonight, because we've already made that motion on March 10th meeting, but now we would make it again? I'm just wondering what we're just binding.
Well, he, we're not, you're not giving it to him.
Okay.
That, you know, he doesn't get it, it sits in a drawer at town hall until, you know, the deed's recorded. So, it's, he's not, he's not holding it, we are, so.
Okay, so, I, Ned, you were gonna answer the third question, I hope, and then I just have a comment after that.
The third question is that the vote is not yet scheduled, they were waiting to meet, for this meeting with the select board, or members of the select board, and they're also waiting on unit owners to come back to Massachusetts for spring/summer, so I know it's due to be scheduled sometime, I think in April, but I don't have a date for when that vote would take place.
I'm wondering if we should continue the hearing then, until at least the select board meeting? It seems that it's premature to wrap this up without some of that feedback.
I would agree with, I would agree with that.
I, I, I am having trouble following, I do know there was some discussion about, I think Kathleen had, and I could be wrong, but I think Kathleen might have mentioned, you know, the the maintenance not necessarily needing to stay, but but I don't know that we all agreed to that, I didn't think we had, I, I, I wouldn't wanna change that, I feel like the whole town meeting and everybody already voted on it that way, so I didn't, so I just, I'm a little concerned about changing that.
There was nothing in the town meeting vote that required the condominium association to hold on to any maintenance obligations, they were volunteering to do it. And then it's decided to pursue the license alternative after listening to the discussion two weeks ago. When I can own it, they ought not to have the obligation to maintain it, period.
Right, I mean, the town, and the town wants the land, what the town wants it.
But, I mean, are we talking about the same land, the parkland, the park part, where they've, they've done such a beautiful job with the the round stone area?
The obligation, the original obligation that was contained in the, in the special permit required the developer, Warf Street LLC, which is the predecessor to the association, to build and maintain the public parking, the public open space elements and other amenities at both 25, which is town-owned property, and 41, which is the developer-owned property. When the condominium was sold out, the association took, took over the obligations of the developer to continue to maintain. And the association became the owner of the property at 41. The town wants to acquire that property from 41, we entered into a written purchase and sale agreement, memorandum of agreement with the select board, copy of which I provided to the board in my filings, that provide for certain things. One is the removal of all of the obligations for, for the association to maintain any of the elements at 25 and 41 Warf Street, that's a condition of the agreement that we reached.
Can you show us the visual? Can you show us the visual, I'm trying to picture, do you have it handy, I'm sorry to interrupt, it would just help me to follow your logic.
Yeah, let me see if I can get it and then share a screen.
Okay, thank you.
So Ned, maybe while we're bringing that up, you can talk about the benefits to the condo association in entering into a license?
It actually was my idea, Meredith, and I was just speaking because of the fact that in the years that I was town council, when we would on occasion, you know, give license agreements to condo associations or homeowners associations or other sorts of things to allow them to access town. to allow them to access town property. They don't have the right to go on town property once they no longer own it. You don't wanna give them an easement because we don't necessarily, we have to go to town meeting to grant easements. And licenses are very typical for this sort of arrangement where you, that can terminate at any time, um, by the town or, you know, by the condo association. Um, and as I said, they're licenses, they're not interested in real estate. But if we don't, if they don't have a license, they don't have any right to go on property that they no longer own.
So that circle, I'm sorry, Meredith, I'm sorry.
I just was, it was our request to do that. It wasn't, I, Ned made it sound like, in watching it, that was.
No, it was my suggestion when we were talking about the maintenance, if they were gonna be doing it, they would have to get a license from the Select Board to be able to do it. Because it's, the land will be owned by the town, not by the condo association.
This land is owned by the town. This is twenty-five Warf Street. This is the, the boat ramp. This is the park area, the, the, it, Warf Street LLC, when it developed, eighty-eight Warf Street, developed public parking on forty-one Warf Street. So let me just go up. Yeah, so this is a plan view, and it's turned on its side. So Warf Street coming down from Adams Street comes down to the boat ramp, this park area. Here's, um, the old, this is the yacht club building, okay? Forty-one Warf Street is all of this. And at far end of forty-one Warf Street is another boat ramp. It's called Captain's Landing. There's a permanent easement that was granted to the town as part of this special permit. It required the development of twenty-six parking spaces to be owned and maintained for the benefit of the public. There were, these parking spaces were included in the total number of parking spaces required for the development, but they were made available to the public. And Warf Street, the condominium association is obligated to continue to maintain those, um, in perpetuity. There's a separate temporary easement area here that was originally twelve years in length. It was a temporary easement, and it was to be used for easement to the town, essentially to allow the, the town to provide a location for the yacht club members to store their boats. It was part of the process going back through with DEP when Chapter ninety-one license was being granted, as it was, it gave sort of precedent to the, the waterfront uses to be maintained. And that was a twelve-year easement. It expired in, I think, twenty-fourteen or fifteen, and it's been renewed six or seven times. The last one was renewed in December, and it runs through July. It would have to be renewed again if the conveyance has not happened by July. So this is condominium association-owned. This is town-owned. This is forty-one Warf, eighty-eight Warf over here. What the, what the association is required to do currently is to maintain the park elements here and all of the public access and park elements on, on forty-one Warf Street. The town reached out, I don't know who reached out first, but for several years now, we've been in negotiations with the Select Board, with the notion of conveying forty-one Warf Street to the town. The agreement that was reached last August with the Select Board provides for a number of things. One of which is all of the obligations of the condominium association to maintain any portions of these two properties go away. We no longer own them. We ought not to have the obligation to continue to operate, to, to maintain them. This public parking can now convert to something else if the town desires for it to happen. As long as the association owns it, it must be public parking. Um, and it's gotta be laid out as it is. So this, the, the town, with its landing committee, presumably is working on different ideas about what to do. But we're out, we would be out of the way. The town would have complete control over all the decision-making associated with how this whole area is maintained and operated. We had offered, because the membership of the, of the association thinks of this as an amenity. It's a, it's a, it's a beautiful entry into eighty-eight Warf Street, and they see it as a nice amenity that's, that enhances the, the vistas for eighty-eight Warf. And so for that purpose, their thought was, and my direction was, two weeks ago, was to request that, that the permit modification not release them from the obligation to maintain this park area. After listening to the discussion and Kathleen's, in particular Kathleen's suggestion that it's more appropriate to do it by means of a license, which could be canceled by either party, as opposed to by continuation of the special permit, they asked me to, um, seek that modification to eliminate the requirement to do, to, to perform the maintenance, but that they would then reach out to the Select Board and enter into a license agreement. But that would be between the Select Board and the association. I think all this Board has the, the power and the right to do is to modify the special permit. The terms and conditions of the overall transaction are controlled by the agreement that was reached with the Select Board. So there are some other things that have to happen, one of which was town meeting approval for the, for the town to receive it. There's a separate requirement that seventy-five percent of the owners of the, of the condominium, of the condominiums vote to authorize the transfer. That's a meeting that's coming, hopefully, in April. There's a significant amount of money that actually gets paid by the association to the town. It's unusual where the transferor of property is also paying money. In this case, there's a significant amount of money that's being paid, um, to the town. And some, a handful of other requirements that are spelled out in the agreement. And so what we're really just trying to do is connect the dots on the requirements for conveyance that are spelled out in the, in the memorandum, memorandum of agreement that was entered into last August. And one of the last dots to be connected is the modification of the special permit.
Thank you for showing us those visuals. Did anyone else have any questions?
I also had a question on the language of the draft decision itself. I don't know if that can be, uh, shared on the screen.
I can share, I've got it. This was the latest version that I emailed to Tim.
Yeah, so that last paragraph references the following terms and conditions, but I, where are the terms and conditions? If you look down the third line or beginning of the second, or the end of the second line, they're subject to the following terms and conditions.
I can strike the subject of the following conditions because the amendment simply removes all conditions contained in the special permit that requires the maintenance of elements of twenty-five, forty-one, Captain's Landing.
All right, so I still, and I, I think that makes sense because I think the question would be, what are they? If that, that language is there. But I still think, um, I would like to have a vote on this after the Select Board meeting with the, because this is binding once it's voted, and.
It's not binding once it's voted. It's not binding until it's recorded.
Yeah, but we don't have any opportunity to amend it once we vote it. So I guess.
But, and how would you amend it?
Well, if there's, if there's a disagreement about what the requirements that are currently in the special permit for maintenance, if all of that's not buttoned up, then we're re-giving the, um, the property, we're relieving it of that obligation. And before we relieve of that obligation, I, I want to be sure that the Select Board is on the same page.
I, I would agree with you, Cheryl. Kathleen, did, did you have your hand up?
I, I get, I thought that we had already voted this, yes, last time. And that what we were doing tonight was then sort of saying we would, um, you know, authorize Tim, the Director, to sign the special permit on behalf of the planning board and hold it in escrow until the Select Board is prepared to go ahead with the purchase and sale, I mean, with the completion of the closing. Because in, in, in my life for closings and situations like this, it's, it's, you have a list, you have a closing checklist. And so you need to make sure that you go through the checklist and you have all the items. So that if it's a catch-22, if we don't have this ready, then they can't close on the deed because the purchase and sale agreement says that consideration for the transfer not only is a check to the town, but, um, this amendment of the special permit. So. Nobody's gonna be able to move off the dime unless we say, okay, fine, we will, we will authorize the execution of this. We'll have it held by our Director, not by Ned. It's held in escrow until the Select Board is ready to close. If the Select Board isn't happy with what happens and not happy with the arrangements that they've negotiated with the condo association, then the Select Board isn't gonna accept the deed, in which case, this is a no.
We actually didn't, we actually, my hand was up, but I, um, we did not vote on this because we did not, we had not seen the draft language. Ned was kind enough to send it out, um, just after our last meeting, so.
Thanks, Meredith, I couldn't remember where, you know.
And, and, you know, I would say, you know, I, you know, I think this all looks good. But I, I do feel like it would, you know, just correcting that language and having a final, a sort of a final draft that we're looking at, that we can approve, I would feel more comfortable doing that. And, and, you know, just, you know, taking out the subject to, you know, the following terms or previous terms and conditions, maybe. But, um, just changing that wording, I have, I have no concern with, with doing it as a license and not, and taking the permit out of the escrow.
I, I have no problem striking that language right there. But I do have a problem with any other condition that could be introduced to this amendment. Because the only purpose for this amendment is to eliminate the obligations to do the maintenance.
I, I don't know, does the, does the Select Board know? I, I mean, I don't know that they were. Knows that, that now the town will be obligated to.
Yes, yes, that was, that was, that was part of the fundamental negotiation that took place between the Board, the two Boards. Is what is it that is gonna be left behind? And one of the big issues was the seventy-five thousand dollars that was gonna be paid, and for what purpose? Right? And what kind of liability might be held on to as a result? Some people are concerned about, you know, what, what might be, might be there. We agreed to make a payment, um, to cover potential future liability, and that payment is, is made, uh, over five years. But it's, it is a requirement of the agreement. This is just a, one of the requirements of the agreement. The Board, the Select Board and Town Council knew specifically what they were negotiating when they negotiated, um, this, this agreement.
I think it all looks good, I think, but.
So Cheryl, um, are you stuck on the same thing that I'm stuck on? That, or no?
Well, as I said, it's part of the purchase and sale agreement, it's part of the negotiations between the condo association and the Select Board. And I don't see how it's, it's our, it's our, you know, um, purview to step in between a requirement for their closing. The Select Board's already decided to acquire the land. There's been all sorts of discussion around the acquisition of this. It's part of the Milton Landing Plan. The town wants to have control of all of this because we're doing this Chapter ninety-one licensing. And, you know, it, it was, it's all part of the town's plan for that whole area. And it's part of the purchase and sale agreement.
Null and void then if they don't close? Because we're giving, uh, uh, we're relieving a requirement that's in the special, that's in their special permit. So if it doesn't close, does this agreement, does this, um, relief still stand? Is my worry and concern?
No, it doesn't, because we voted that it's specifically contingent upon the town acquiring the property.
Yeah, but it doesn't say it in the decision.
It wouldn't say it in the decision because you wouldn't be recording the decision unless it goes, unless the deed goes through.
And it's, and it's in your minutes.
Well, we don't have approved minutes yet.
We can, I mean, but we'd say it, we'd say it again now.
It's on the public record.
Just ask a question. So we came into last meeting with the assumption that the condo association was going to continue maintenance of the park area. Did we end the meeting with that assumption?
Yes, because, because that was what we all understood two weeks ago.
So that's where we were when we ended our last meeting. And then this meeting, we introduced this new idea that that, that, well, Kathleen brought it up at the last meeting, but it was introduced as a, a new thing that we're agreeing to. So that's new in today's agreement, that, that we are agreeing to, that it's licensed and that they don't have an obligation.
It's not us that can agree to that, Denny, respectfully. It's the Select Board that can agree to that.
That's what I want the Select Board to weigh in on. That's, that's what I.
Denny, here's, on the screen now is paragraph five of the, of the purchase and sale agreement.
No, it's a decision still, sorry.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, let me stop sharing, reach here. Can you see that now? So, September one.
Yeah.
Twenty-one. Subject to the approval of the conveyance by town meeting and seventy-five percent of the owners of the condominium units, the Select Board shall support efforts to modify the permits in order to eliminate the association's obligations to main both the property and the public access elements of other property owned by the town at twenty-five Warf Street. The parties' obligations under this agreement are conditioned upon the modification of such permits. That's, that is an obligation that the town agreed to assume, that this transfer would, would be conditioned upon the elimination of the association's obligation to do maintenance. Where we were two weeks ago was the association was, was volunteering to continue an obligation to maintain twenty-five Warf Street. But after hearing the discussion, particularly Kathleen's discussion about a license as maybe a more appropriate way to do it, they think that that's the right way to go. And so they are withdrawing their volunteer, their voluntary, notion that they would continue to ma- maintain twenty-five Warf Street as a condition of the permit. And they wanna pursue that, um, separately through a license with the Select Board. But this language is clear.
All right, so I have a question for Kathleen. Kathleen, um, so what would a motion sound like if you were to make one that ensures that, um, that this is held in escrow? And, um, and I don't know what phrasing it is, but it's only valid in the event of the closing, and it's not valid otherwise. What would that motion sound like?
Well, just first of all, to confirm, the special permit isn't any good unless it's recorded. That's true of any special permit, any amendment to a special permit. So none of them are effective unless they're recorded. So we don't, we don't have to, um, we don't have to go, we don't have to say that it, it's not effective. I mean, it's not effective if it's not recorded. So we, our motion would be to authorize the execution of the amended decision with the last change that has just been made and that the executed, properly executed amendment to the special permit will be held in escrow by the town planner, the director of planning and development until such time as the select board authorizes its release together with the recording of the deed.
And that's perfectly acceptable to us.
So if the select board, so this goes to the select board next, and if the select board disagrees with this approach, then they can modify a license with you or something now?
Well, no, the license is a completely separate thing and that only can happen until, that doesn't happen until the town owns the land.
The select board cannot disagree with the modification. The select board cannot disagree with what we're proposing because they've already agreed to it.
Wow.
That would be, that would be a breach of the agreement.
Right. It's in the purchase and sale agreement right there. They've already agreed to it. And, and Denny, seriously, if they're not happy about it, they're not going to accept the deed. And you have to, when you get a deed in, from a town, an entity, um, for a town entity, it's not any good unless there's an acceptance of the deed signed by the select board and recorded with the deed. So not only is there a deed that says, hi, it's Fred to the select, to town of Milton, but there has to be an acceptance. And deeds that are recorded without acceptances are not binding on the town. So nobody can just walk into the registry of deed with some deeds, some stinking hazardous waysite and deliver it to, record it and have the town say, oh, you, you're the owner of it. I just recorded that deed. So there's a whole process and the, the recording of this special permit would be part of that.
Rich, do you mind if I jump in quickly with a question about the language? Um, the language in front of us says, um, it refers to the property capitalized and then it refers to the property at 25 War Street. The draft decision refers to 25 War Street and 41 War Street and Captain's Landing. So is that consistent with this, with what we see on the screen?
I think it is.
Are you looking at what the definition of property is there? Because it doesn't reference 41.
Definition of the property is just 41 War Street.
Okay. So then can you explain, uh, so 25 War and 41 War for both referenced in both documents, but Captain's Landing? Is that referenced in that document on the screen where it is referenced in the decision?
Um, no, it's not specifically referenced, um, but Captain's Landing encompasses both portions of 41 War Street and property beyond 41 War Street. Captain's Landing
I'd rather have it be consistent and remove Captain's Landing then if they, the select board's agreement only covers 25 and 41.
Um, that's fine. Let me, um, we're not obligated under the permits to maintain Captain's Landing, so it's fine to remove it. Stop sharing, go get that.
Rich, did you want to talk? I just noticed your hand. I'm sorry.
Right. Yes, yeah. The only thing I was gonna say is, I, so I'm, I'm following where we're, I think the worry was and I think, I mean, I'm good. I, I was also, from the last meeting, I was, you know, in the same camp Kathleen was. I, I thought it would have been smarter to go, obviously I didn't, Kathleen had the language, but I just didn't. I, I thought it was odd that they would tie themselves to this, you know, keeping, maintaining it. So I liked it, that it was changed. Um, I don't know. I, I don't see the problem anymore. I feel like it's, you know, I'm ready. I would be interested in moving on this.
Could we, could we simplify the motion just to say, subject to review of town council and agreement by the select board?
No. Can't do that.
I, I mean, it sounds like, and I, although I guess where I'm getting held up is we were, I thought we were pretty ready last meeting, but we wanted them to go back and talk through it. They came back and changes.
I think, I think you just wanted me to present a draft of a decision, uh, which I did.
Consider changing what Kathleen said.
In response to what Kathleen said, we've considered that and we're proposing that that's the approach we would take. The association is concerned fundamentally that the town won't adequately maintain the park. Um, and so they wanted to make sure that there was a vehicle in place for them to help maintain it.
Yeah. The reason why I'm okay with this, I guess, Meredith, is we're all on camera. We're, this is documented. And what we're voting on is pretty, well, I mean, we've talked through this pretty well. I don't think there's any misconstruing it. If all of a sudden something was to slip through, you know, we would need to revote it and make sure, I mean, I would, we'd have to revisit.
Well, I don't know if we can, once we sign this, it's done, but
No, well, no, you can't, you can't take a vote and then twist it, have it go sideways. And not, I mean, I have a, I believe in our legal system better than that. I mean, we, you know what I mean, like, and plus, I, I don't know. I, I don't, I mean, Ned works in this town. He's coming for us probably in a week. Um, I'm not, I'm not worried about
I have an ethical obligation, yeah.
Yeah.
Right? Um, I don't understand the concern. I'm just, this is just one of the boxes that we're checking off on the checklist that gets us to a closing. And it's a specific condition that was, that the select board agreed to in the process of the, of developing an agreement as to how and under what circumstances the property of 41 War Street would be conveyed. And that took us over a year to negotiate, a two-page document. So this is just one of the boxes that gets checked. We need, this board has to amend the permit to eliminate the conditions associated with maintaining 25 and 41. That's fundamental. It's as simple as that.
I, I see Rich's hand up. Did, Rich, did you?
Sorry, no, I, I just didn't put it down. But I guess I will just say then, I mean, again, I mean, folks, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely one for not minding pushing things to another meeting and, and then considering it over and over. Uh, we've done it before and I've done it. Um, this, I don't see the point. The only other thing I can say is, and I don't want to speak for him, we, you know, if Tim was on this call, I know he talked last time and made some comments of what the feeling of the select board was. I feel like if he was on this call, maybe he would be doing that right about now. Um, I, you know. I mean, I know he's joining the call. If, if folks are so worried that they want to hear from Tim first, I mean, maybe we wait till he comes back into the meeting to take our vote. I just don't want to push it too, I don't want to push it off.
Okay, I, I noticed Kathleen's hand is up.
Um, I just, uh, so I have a motion and as I said, the, the ultimate break on this is that the select board doesn't accept the deed from the condo association. It's up to them. We're only just one little bit of the, of the negotiations of, of an agreement between the condo association and the select board. And, you know, they, they'll decide, you know, whether they want to go ahead with it or not. They've already signed a purchase and sale agreement with these provisions and we're complying with the provisions.
Yeah, I'm, based on review of this document and the discussion, I'm ready to move forward. These documents, I should say.
Okay, so Kathleen made a motion. Um, did you want, does anybody want to second the motion?
I'd like to hear the, her read the motion. I think that she's written.
I didn't write it. I just came up with it like Athena from the head of Zeus.
Well, then can you, can you, Athena, can you please repeat your motion?
So, I would move, I would move that we authorize the, uh, director of planning and development execute the amendment to the special permit on behalf of the planning board and to hold the signed amendment in escrow until directed to release it by the select board in connection with the closing.
And it would be the amended decision as amended on
As amended this evening, yes.
I'll second it.
Well, isn't that another, I'm sorry, I don't know that exact legal these terms, but is that another stopgap for you? If Tim decides that we did something wrong, that he just doesn't have to do it?
No, we directed him to sign it. He doesn't have
Actually just means it has to be done.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, sorry.
Okay, discussion. We have a motion and we have a second discussion. Um, Rich, is that you? No? Did somebody have their hand? Oh, it's Kathleen. You still have your hand up?
No, sorry, it was an accident.
Okay, um, okay, so nobody wants to discuss it? Um, all right, I guess I'll do a roll call. Um, Kathleen O'Donnell? Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Mary Paul?
Yes.
Benny Swenson, yes. Okay, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Good night.
We'll see some of you on Saturday.
Oh, yes, I, I will be there.
Thank you. I'll stop sharing and you can go back to the
Thanks. Good night. Okay, thank you.
Happy spring.
Yes, finally. Okay, all right, so we are entering our old, oh, wait a minute, 582 Blue Hill Avenue. Um, Julia?
Denny, sorry. Did we close the public hearing on the, um, the DA War?
We did not.
I believe you've got their hand raised too, just so you know.
Oh, 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 thank you. I just, okay, Jim DeSalle.
But before, we should make a motion to close.
Yeah, we need to make a motion to close the hearing on
What if he wants to talk about DA War stuff?
Um, no, I think he's had, he's probably has his hand up for the A and R plan.
Okay, all right, let's, uh, close. Um, does somebody want to make a motion?
I just did.
Okay. Uh, Rich seconded? Okay, all in favor, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Taggias?
Yes.
Benny Swenson, yes. And Mr. DeSalle, um, let's see, would you like to join our panelists? For the 582? Sean, can you help? Or Julia, could you help Mr. DeSalle join our panelists?
I'm just, I'm a panelist, so I'm not a co-host. So I, I can't let people in, but Denny, are, are you sure you're not a co-host?
It says I'm a co-host, but I'm not able to do anything. Is that weird? Oh, okay, thank you, Sean. Hi, Mr. DeSalle.
I am here. And I'm here for 582, sorry.
I think we need drum rolls now. I think we need drum rolls, like trumpets when somebody comes in.
I know, we should. Um, okay, okay, um, would you like to present 582, um, to us?
Um, 582 is obviously, everyone knows the project. It's a 40B that's, um, just been, I guess, approved. Um, but there's, we did an A and R. It's a two lot subdivision now, uh, that was done probably about six or seven years ago. And, um, we reconfigured it to separate the carriage house from the main house. And the reason for that is nothing to do with the 40B. It has to do with the renting of the property. So it's, nothing's going to change and it's only a stopgap for, um, um, the town of Milton's bylaws on renting property.
Okay, thank you for that. I just wanted to read, Tim Churinsky left us a note and he said, um, if you get to 582 Blue Hill Ave A and R before he arrives, he's reviewed the plan. He believed that the lot, he believes the lot fronts on a public way, has adequate frontage, provides vital access from the lots to the public way. He recommends the planning workshop to authorize the planning director to endorse this plan as not requiring subdivision approval. So in other words, it checks all of the boxes. So, um, do we want to discuss?
Can we get the plan on the screen, please?
Um, I don't know. Mr. DeSalle, are you able to share?
I did not bring it with me. I thought Tim would be here.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Julia. Are you able to pull that up? Let me see if I can find it in my email. Did, uh, Tim send us an email about that? I wonder.
I, I'm on two computers right now, so I've got to transfer my work stuff over to my laptop. Just give me, give me a second. I'll try to find it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Okay, so, um, okay, well, Julia looks through the map. Did anybody else have any questions besides Cheryl?
I can get it. It'll just be a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, I, I do have it on my, uh, desktop if it's
Oh, it'd be easier for you to get it because I'm going to log into my
Yeah, I've got, I've got it, Denny. Okay, I'll share the screen.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Everybody see it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, Jim, can you explain now what you said? So this is, I'm going to draw what I think is the subdivision of it.
Yeah.
This line along Blue Hill Ave.
Correct.
Coming down here.
Correct.
Down to here.
Yep. And that, and that's the, the lot. Right now, there's a funky lot that, um, comes out and behind the house. Um, and, and, and the reason for this is literally because of the bylaw in the town that renting of property to multiple families. Um, so what the client wants to do is just keep the house rented the way it is and keep the carriage house rented the way it is until all litigation about the 40B goes through. I mean, nothing's going to change physically with the property. The use is going to stay
Have they been renting these properties for the last couple of years?
Yes, they have.
So why is this something that needs to be done now where it's been rented for a couple of years already?
Because, um, I, I'm not 100% sure because I was, I was whipped sort of out of this project, but, um, the, somebody dropped the, um, called the building department and said there's, you can't have multiple families on one lot and, uh, renting, you know, so many people, um, so many people can't rent on one property. So if we separate the carriage house from the main house, it can stay the way it's been done for the past couple of years.
And then Kathleen, do you understand there to be any impact on the 40B, pending 40B? I think there's legal challenges to that.
Nope.
Okay. So the, the lot, even though you subdivide the lots, stays in the same ownership? Is that how it works?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's just the nature of, um, you know, our, our complicated zoning bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that doesn't, you know, doesn't allow, you know, two families except in districts where they, where places where they already are located. Um, interestingly enough, the carriage house and, you know, walk the site and look at the history, these were accessory dwellings and were always rented as part of the, you know, rental of the, of the ownership of the main house, but
Wouldn't they have needed to go for approval be- before now?
No, because it was pre-existing. You know, it's been there a long time. That house is, you know, prior to zoning.
I guess, I guess my question is then why do you need it now?
Well, because somebody dropped a dime on them to the building commissioner.
Well, so that, so that's two different things, like either you were allowed because you were existing uh, allowed because you were existing, and it wouldn't matter who dropped a dime on them, or it, it, it was illegal before, and, and now you need to change it, so I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I think originally they were occupied by people who worked at the house, and that would be allowed under our accessory dwelling definition, which you allow, allows you to have accessory buildings occupied by somebody who is an employee. But the owners of this are long gone, and they've been renting, you know, while renting the main house and renting out the side buildings, you know, nobody bothered, nobody paid any attention, like so many other situations we know about in town where, you know, people just do it, you don't bother getting the permit for it.
Okay, so just, just so I say that, because I just wanna understand. So, would have been grandfathered in or whatever, they would have been allowed, and then they, it changed, so then you wouldn't be allowed anymore, and then they got.
Yeah.
Alright, but as far as this A and R that's before us, they have checked all of the boxes, so, I would entertain a motion to approve it, if anybody is ready to do so.
Somebody else wanna make a motion besides me?
I mean, I can make a motion.
Okay, did I hear?
Let Meredith make a motion.
Go ahead, Meredith.
We approve the five eighty-two Blue Hill Avenue A and R.
I'll second. Oh, Kathleen second, alright, all in favor, uh, Rich Beeler?
Is that actually the motion, though? I thought the motion is to endorse the.
Yeah, let me read what. We have to endorse the, uh, endorse the, authorize our Director of Planning to, uh, to sign the, endorse the plan on the planning board's behalf.
That's right, let me read it, I'm sorry, um, I should have, um, the, he said the planning board should vote to authorize the planning director to endorse this plan as not requiring subdivision approval.
Right.
Oh, sorry, go ahead and second it, then I'll ask my question.
So, okay, Kathleen second, alright, Rich, what's your question?
Sorry, it maybe just, um, not relevant, obviously, maybe, but, um, Kathleen, um, question. If our ADU went through, I recall when we were talking about the ADU, it was especially, somebody, we had put in there that nobody can be grandfathered in, so you can't come around, I, I mean, I guess the way I took it, and I don't think I was for it, but the way I took it was, somebody couldn't come around and say, hey, I've got one that's not legal, can I do an ADU, and I thought the answer was no. Why wouldn't they have been allowed to, when normally it seems like you can?
Well, I mean, in the, if we had put in, I had written in an early, early draft, I had said that if you had one, an illegal one, you could come in and get permission to legalize it, because I was trying to address the situation where, where we've got these illegal things all over the place. Not all over the place, but we have enough incidents of it, and then we just sort of thought, I thought that would be a good idea, but we took that out because there was objection to that provision, uh, made by, um, Mr. Whiteside, so, we removed it.
I'm gonna save this conversation from when we talk about ADUs again, but I guess my question in some, at some future time is going to be, even though we took that out, how is that even possible not to have somebody allowed to come back and ask for, hey, I'd like now an ADU, I mean, it almost seems like you would have to have them dismantle it, and then say, sorry, okay, I'm coming back for an ADU.
Well, no, I mean, they could apply for, they could apply for a very, you know, various, for special permit or something, we, you know, we originally thought you could, it would make it simpler, it wouldn't be a full-on, you know, special permit, you would just come into the building inspector and get it, you know, get a certificate of occupancy for it.
Yeah, you can always.
No, I understand, and, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't wanna derail this, or I wanna approve it, I just, what I guess got me on this is the conversation about dropping a dime, I mean, the reality is, I mean, it shouldn't be that somebody had to drop a dime, you know, if something's illegal, it should be done the right, the right way, so. I, I'm for this, because it's now being done the right way.
Yeah. And I think, I think one of the objections was, and I, I don't remember exactly what Alex's objection was, but the idea was that if somebody had been doing illegal ADUs, we didn't want to just reward, you know, whoever was doing it, we wanted them to still go through a application process like everybody else, so. But I do think that we all have the ultimate goal of trying to not have illegal ones all over the place. And, and, you know, fire insurance and everything else, we want, we want people to live safely, so that the goal in the end is to, to to somehow get them. Okay, so we have a, yeah, a motion, a second, anybody else wanna discuss further? Okay, um, all in favor, uh, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes. Okay, um, thank you, Mr. DeSalle.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good evening.
You too, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. Well, here it is. Um, eight fifteen. Um, our last item is old business, um, discussion of May twenty twenty-two annual town meeting articles. Did anyone wanna talk about any of our town meeting articles coming up?
I, uh, wanted to talk about the, uh, codification. Joe Prondak, um, you know, and I have talked about our zoning over the many years. And I asked that, um, I quit, I sent the letter that I was typing on, or email rather, and asked it be forwarded to everyone, which I think you all received. And when I was watching the warrant committee meeting on Monday, and I saw that this was article was being withdrawn, I texted Tim immediately, and I said, why, you know, we've been waiting for this, because I was on the planning board when we authorized use of ten thousand dollars of planning board budget to get this done. We all know that it is so difficult to work in Milton, because our zoning code is so out of date, and all of the things that we've amended over the last, uh, what, twelve years, or fourteen years, or whatever, they're not in the zoning code, you know, so how can anybody work in this town? So, I, um, I don't understand it, Tim's not here. Um, his text to me was that, um, you know, we're trying to get, apparently trying to get perfect with it, it's, it's not revising the language of the zoning code, it's making it so that everything is there, and it's electronic, and it's searchable, and even if it's not perfect, it would be far, far better than what we have now. And I really would like to see that it move forward, so I, I don't know what that would take, but I did wanna bring it up, because it, it impacts our work, and I, it, and it impacts our, our zoning compliance officer, building commissioner's work, and, uh, I might like him to have, uh, an opportunity to see this get done.
Okay, well, I think, I, I can't speak for everyone, but I, I can only imagine that everybody would love to see this online. Um, my understanding is that it's in the hands of town council, and it, it just needs to be properly posted, and I understand it's very difficult, because it's over a hundred pages long, and so it just needs to be properly posted, we need to have a public hearing, after it's properly posted, uh, the deadline for the warrant printing, printing is, I think, next week, but it might be the week after, given that they're putting the meeting back, but I do think everybody does wanna move it forward. Um, you know, I'm, I'm happy to go along with whatever town council advises. I think, I think we're at that pi- place, though, where we're just trying to check the legal boxes. I, I, I think that's, but I could be wrong, but if, if town council is okay, then I'm certainly okay with moving it forward.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't, I didn't think it was town council where it was stuck.
Yeah.
I, I thought it was the bylaw review committee that was getting in.
I'd like some report on it, if we could, even if it's by email, uh, because if, if there's an opportunity for us to weigh in, that we would like to see this move forward, that, um, unless there's some legal reason that it can't, I mean, I, I would like us to take a position that, and send a note to the select board, um, and to the warrant committee. And if it, there is a legal reason that lies with town council, then I would like to send a, a message to the select board to encourage a special town meeting this fall, because they don't, we don't always do them, and that zoning would be the reason to have it. We, we would, uh, like to see the, the ADU that was sent for further study, and the, um, the work with that on the temporary apartment amendment, and then this codification, if it doesn't get through on the May town meeting. Um, at least those, if not other things, um, so that we don't have to wait, um, another year for these things to come back.
I'm confused, what, what do you mean by waiting for town council, what, what exactly would they have to do?
We, we have to post it properly, and I understand it's like a hundred-page document, I don't know what the issue, I don't know what the challenge with that is. But I understand, Tim, Tim, Tim did the thoughtful thing, which is, he, he grabbed it, he put a placeholder in, and he was hopeful you'd get it all done, but I think it's just, but I, you know, let's get a report back from town council on what needs to happen in order for this to happen.
But I, I do think that this is the body that can direct it to happen, so I don't, I mean.
We, we can't ask the select board to let us know about this?
Well, I, I mean, it's just, it's, it's embarrassing.
It's our bylaw, so we can ask town council to give us an update.
Yeah, I mean, it's just embarrassing, you go online, I was online with somebody yesterday with this petition in some other town, and you know, there I am, looking up, there's, there's up to twenty twenty-one.
No, I know.
It is sad, you have to rely on folks' memory, um, when you're talking about things, which is kinda sad, when you're in meetings.
No, I mean, I have to go off through my folders, I'm always like, I feel like it's nineteen seventy-two, I know, it's.
Frankly, like, when we get these forty Bs and they're asking for waivers, like, they don't even know what waivers they're asking for, because they don't even have current bylaws, I mean, it's really, um, most people don't know that they have to call the commissioner and ask if your bylaw's been updated. How many times your bylaw has been updated since the one you've got officially posted? You know, it's.
If something.
I never have to do that when I'm working in other communities, it's just crazy, anyway.
It sounds like a hundred-page document needs to be scanned and put online, that, that doesn't, that's not difficult.
Well, I don't know, let's, let's get, let's get the report from.
Because it's a codification, the whole idea is it's gonna be an online tool, not a paper document, so why are we trying to post a paper document when we're doing an online tool?
And, let's get a report from Tim and town council, I don't, Julia, do we expect?
What, can we just then say we, we would, um, sort of support the, um, the building commissioner in the request to, to the select board to reinstate that article, and to go forward with the, um, with the, uh, codification of our zoning bylaw? That's just, that's just a vote from the planning board to say, we support the building commissioner's request.
I'll second that.
Sure, but I mean, pending, any, I mean, we want, we want town council.
Well, the, the select board is gonna make its own decision, they can talk to town council, we don't have to make it pending anything, we can just say we support the building commissioner, the select board's gonna decide, and town council's gonna decide whether it's ready to go.
I just wanna be sure we check all the boxes with the town council, that's, I'm fine, it's fine?
I mean, they don't have to do anything.
Yeah.
They're not gonna do it if town council says not to do it. Right. So that's funny, I think.
That's, don't pretend to play a lawyer on TV, but I mean, that doesn't make any sense to me, I, I mean, I can put a hundred-page document right online right now, it's not hard. I keep folks away from the ride. It sounds like it means, like, maybe they don't have, like, I don't know, maybe, I don't know, I feel like somebody just has to push it forward.
Yeah, I, I do know, we'd have to have a public hearing, and I know there's an issue with the warrant, getting it on, anyway, let's let the town council take the lead on this, I think it's a nice.
And Danny, I would like to offer that I will attend a, an additional meeting that's called in specifically for the purpose of having a public hearing on this, because I think it's that important, I really do think we need to push it.
Um, well, we have one scheduled in two weeks from now, and I think they'd have to do, schedule it two weeks from. Hold on, let me pull up my calendar and see what we have, maybe, we have a meeting sched- scheduled on the twenty-fourth, we could move it to be twenty-eighth. I'm sorry, no, I'm wrong, today is the twenty-fourth, our next meeting is scheduled the fourteenth. So, um, we would need, we could move our fourteenth, well, we could do it on the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Okay, so if, if, if it helps Tim at all.
But Danny, that's three weeks out, all I'm saying is if we needed to schedule another meeting for this, to help move this along.
That's right, but Tim, Tim would need to figure it out with the select board, so give Tim Friday to figure it out, and then on the twenty-eighth, he could schedule one two weeks out, and, you know, get it in the newspaper, that might take him a couple of days. So it would probably end up coming around the fourteenth, but I'd be willing to juggle the days by a few if he wants, but why don't we work with Tim, and I can text you all, and we could, if you wanna juggle it by a few days to help the warrant committee, I'd be willing to do that, if people are interested. Why don't we work with Tim on this? Okay?
Well, that's good.
Okay, so the, that, that meeting of the fourteenth is tentative of the fourteenth, if it helps Tim for us to move it, a few days either way, we'll do it. Okay?
I think we do have a motion if you, if you entertained it.
Um, oh, yes, I.
Kathleen made.
Okay, let's hear it, Kathleen.
Well, I mean, a motion that we would support the building commissioner's request for the re-institution of this article.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, are we doing this with the, were we gonna have the select board or somebody check into it, or just?
All we're doing is supporting the building commissioner, we're not doing anything more than that.
It doesn't tie anybody's hands, just as we.
No, yeah, we're just saying, you know.
Town council.
Go, Joe.
And if town council comes back and says we have all that, we have issues that we don't understand, then we, we just vote back.
All we've said is we're supporting Joe.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think your word to them too, Danny, is we'll work with the schedule, uh, you know, because we think it's important for this, you know, for all the reasons Joe said, we, we think it's important to move forward, you know, if it means we have to work in another meeting, we're willing to do it, but if, if for other reasons they can't, they say it can't be done, then they'll have to let us know, but.
At that point.
Yeah.
We should wanna know why it can't be done, and, okay, what are we gonna, what do we have to do to make it get done, because we can't, can't just be sorry it can't be done.
Right. And I'm sorry, Tim did tell me a week or two ago, there were some issues, and I can't even remember what they are, but then I heard about legal issues, but I don't, it was just procedural, like, Tim, Tim, Tim grabbed a placeholder, wanted to get this done, and then he ran into some trouble, and he can explain it far better than I can. He told me while we were talking about something else, and I didn't digest it very well. Um, but I, we will let Tim give us his update, and, um, we have a meeting on the fourteenth that we can move around, I don't think we have anything else, like, like a public hearing or anything that day. I'm not remembering any, and I don't have any of my notes right here, so I think, I think that's, I think we can have one meeting that week, one way or the other, the fourteenth or another day that week, so. Okay? So we, so we have a motion to support Joe. All in favor, did somebody second it, right?
I did.
Oh, Cheryl did, okay, all in favor, Rich Beeler?
Right.
Uh, Mary Paul?
Yes.
Cheryl's guys?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Benny Swenson? Yes for Joe. Okay. Alright.
Can, can I just ask a quick question, this would require a public hearing?
I believe so, I think any article that goes on the warrant would have a.
Okay, so that would have to go in the times on the seven, on the thirty-first, which is next Thursday, and the seventh of April, and so they'd have to get the ad to them by Tuesday.
Right.
I, I think we need, I mean, that's something to check with, it's just that, if it's just the codification of an existing zoning bylaw, I don't know that it needs a public hearing, but that's a question for town council. Okay, Tim should talk to him about it.
Yeah, so Ti- if Tim wants us to push our meeting from the, um, fourteenth, either, you know, either way, by a few days, or a week, we're willing to do that, so to make, to help, that's all. If it helps Tim, we wanna help. Okay? Okay?
That's it?
Okay, yeah.
Motion, do you adjourn?
I, I. Unless, does anybody else have anything further to say before we entertain a motion? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion adjourned.
Okay, all in favor, oh, we need a second. I saw Cheryl and Kathleen tied, okay. Uh, okay. All in favor, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Good night, Danny, yes, good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night, everybody.
Twenty-eight. I know, we're just so happy.
I know.
I don't have anything planned. This is ridiculous.
I know. This is our first time off in I don't know how long, so enjoy your tea or coffee or bourbon or whatever you do. Good night, everybody.
Good night.